Good evening, welcome to the November 12th, 2024 Cabarrus County Board of Education Work and Business Session. The Board has just reconvened from closed session to open session. Board members, we will move to 4.01 where I call for a motion to approve the closed session minutes for October the 7th and 14th.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Escobar. Is there any discussion Board members? Yes, we are keeping them confidential. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the minutes are approved as presented. We will move now to 4.02. I will call for a motion to approve the personnel report as presented. I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the personnel report is now approved. We will move to 5.01 and 5.02. Our presentation of colors and National Anthem, please stand.
Presenting our nation's colors tonight are members of the Central Cabarrus High School Air Force JROTC, and their personnel includes Cadet Technical Sergeant Kathryn Theo Dosiu, Basic Airmen Coria Shannon, Basic Airmen Trinity Cash, and Basic Airmen Cadence McLendon. Honoring Americans tonight with the playing of our National Anthem were members of the Concord High School Brass Ensemble, and their personnel includes Timothy Weaver, Austin Reeves, Azariah Sutton, Nolan Wingfield, and Declan Eckert. Eckert Edwards. The Director of the Concord High School Band is Mr. Ed Harper. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, we'll move to 6.01 to adopt the agenda. We have an additional item. We're going to add 11.06, our Attorney Contract, to this agenda. So I need a motion to approve, I need a motion. I'll make the motion to approve with the addition of the Attorney Contract.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the agenda is approved as presented with the change. We will move to 7.01, our Impact Through Education Awards with Mr. Phil Farr. Welcome, Mr. Farr.
Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Dr. Kapiky, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at AT Allen Elementary School and J.N. Freeze STEM Middle School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representative Leo Spardella to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we continue our 15th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now on to tonight's awards. May I please have the AT Allen Elementary School Administrative Team come forward? Our first honoree from AT Allen is Eden Porter. Eden, please come forward with your family.
Bring your whole family.
Yeah, bring the whole family. Eden Porter has been selected as AT Allen's Impact for Education Student Award winner, and her exemplary qualities of kindness, hard work, and respect for others make her a standout member of the school community. Eden has a heart of gold and consistently demonstrates compassion and consideration toward everyone she meets. Her positive attitude and respectful demeanor set a high standard for her peers, and she is a role model for excellence in behavior. Whether she's lending a helping hand to a classmate or offering support to a teacher, Eden's willingness to help others and her quiet confidence make her an invaluable part of the AT Allen family. As a student, Eden's commitment to learning and personal growth is evident in everything she does. She approaches her academic work with diligence, responsibility, and self-discipline, always striving to improve. Eden's enthusiasm for learning and her curiosity about new ideas make her a joy to teach. She is not afraid of challenges and faces them with bravery and a desire to grow. Beyond academics, Eden's participation in last year's Wonka Musical highlights her well-rounded character, and her thoughtful, empathetic nature makes her a joy to be around. Eden's loyalty, persistence, and respect for others have made a lasting impact at AT Allen Elementary. Congratulations, Eden. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for AT Allen Elementary School. Our next honoree from AT Allen is Maddox Turner. Maddox, please come forward with your family. Maddox Turner stands out as a true leader and role model among his peers. Maddox exemplifies initiative, hard work, and respect for others in every aspect of his school life. He approaches each day with a positive attitude, always giving his best effort whether in the classroom, during AIG, or when helping classmates and teachers. Maddox is known for his strong work ethic and his willingness to assist others, making him a trusted and respected member of the school community. His commitment to learning both inside and outside the classroom sets him apart as a student who is dedicated to his own growth and the success of those around him. Beyond his academic achievements, Maddox is recognized for his integrity and leadership. He was honored as the Cardinal of the Month for Integrity, demonstrating his consistent moral compass and his ability to lead by example. Maddox's genuine and approachable nature allows him to form positive relationships with both peers and adults, and his presence is always uplifting. Whether he's contributing in class, helping a classmate, or excelling on the field, Maddox leaves a lasting impact on everyone he meets. His dedication, respect for others, and I can attitude make him a truly exceptional student. Congratulations, Maddox. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for AT Allen Elementary School. Also from AT Allen is Support Staff Member Latoya Shankle. Ms. Shankle, please come forward with your family. Latoya Shankle has been selected as AT Allen's Impact for Education Staff Award winner in recognition of her exceptional contributions to both the educational program and the overall success of the school. As a key member of the front office, officially known as the front porch, Latoya is often the first person to greet visitors, students, and staff, always with a warm smile and a welcoming attitude. Her positive energy and willingness to help in any situation create a supportive environment that reflects the true spirit of AT Allen. Latoya's journey at our school began as a substitute, and she quickly became a vital part of our community as a teacher assistant, building meaningful connections with students and staff alike. Latoya's commitment to excellence extends far beyond her role in the office. Whether assisting teachers in the classroom, supporting administrators, or working directly with students, she consistently demonstrates initiative and hard work. She approaches every task with enthusiasm, ensuring that the needs of both students and staff are met to the highest standard. Her ability to connect with people from diverse backgrounds makes her an invaluable asset to AT Allen, where she fosters a culture of respect, collaboration, and inclusion. Latoya's unwavering dedication and positive impact on the school community are evident in everything she does. Congratulations, Latoya. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner at AT Allen Elementary. And finally, from AT Allen is Teacher Holly Mabe. Ms. Mabe, please come forward with your family. Ms. Holly Mabe has been selected as AT Allen's Impact for Education Certified Staff Award winner in recognition of her exceptional contributions to both the educational program and the broader school community. With nearly three decades of service to AT Allen Elementary, Ms. Mabe has become a cornerstone of the school, known for her unwavering dedication, strong work ethic, and deep commitment to student achievement. She has impacted countless students and families, providing both academic support and a nurturing environment that fosters growth. As a mentor to student teachers, Ms. Mabe has helped shape the next generation of educators, instilling in them the same passion and professionalism that define her own teaching career. Her ability to wear many hats, whether leading training sessions, supporting her colleagues, or working directly with students, demonstrates her versatility and dedication to the success of every member of the AT Allen community. Ms. Mabe's leadership goes far beyond the classroom, as she is deeply involved in school initiatives and consistently sets high expectations for herself, her team, and her students. She has played a vital role in leading behavior support training across the school and is a trusted mentor to both new and experienced teachers. Her ability to calmly lead with grace and compassion, combined with her focus on fostering relationships with families, makes her an invaluable resource to the entire school community. Through her guidance, students not only learn foundational skills in reading, writing, and math, but also develop crucial life skills like resilience, kindness, and the ability to be a good friend. Holly Mabe's impact extends far beyond the classroom, and her lasting influence on the Nest and its students is a testament to her extraordinary commitment to education and a true game changer in the field of education. Congratulations, Holly. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for AT Allen Elementary. We will now continue with our November Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming J.N. Freeze STEM Middle School. May I have the J.N. Freeze Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from J.N. Freeze STEM Middle School is Angel Morrison. Angel, please come forward with your family. Angel Morrison is an extraordinary young man in the living and learning class, known for his vibrant personality and infectious enthusiasm. His joy for life shines through in every activity he joins, spreading happiness and energy to everyone around him. Angel's fun-loving spirit and outgoing nature make him a favorite among both peers and staff as he thrives on connecting with those around him. Angel's confidence and charisma light up the school. He brings boundless joy to J.N. Freeze with his singing, dancing, and sense of humor. In the hallways and on the bus, Angel keeps things running smoothly with his natural charm. His popularity is undeniable. Other students cheer his name when he walks by, and he often shares dance breaks with the cafeteria staff. Angel's kindness and consideration make him beloved by everyone in the building, and it's common to see students eagerly greeting him in the hallway or the lunchroom. This year, he carried the J.N. Freeze Spirit Flag for the night's home football games. Angel truly embodies the spirit of the school, leaving a positive impact wherever he goes. Congratulations, Angel. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for J.N. Freeze Middle School. Our next honoree from J.N. Freeze is Willa Tadlock. Willa, please come forward with your family. Willa Tadlock is an exemplary student who radiates kindness, positivity, and a genuine passion for learning. Known for her bright personality, Willa brings energy and enthusiasm to every classroom interaction, inspiring both her peers and her teachers. Her conscientiousness and determination are evident in everything she undertakes, and she continually exemplifies the qualities of a servant leader at J.N. Freeze. Beyond her academic pursuits, Willa is deeply involved in extracurricular activities, including her role in Fellowship of Christian Athletes and as the manager of the girls' basketball team. Always dependable, she is trusted and respected member of the J.N. Freeze community, embodying integrity and a dedication to doing the right thing. Her joyful spirit, paired with her generosity and commitment, make Willa a true role model, someone who lifts others up and leads by example both in and out of the classroom. Congratulations, Willa. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for J.N. Freeze STEM. Next from J.N. Freeze is Staff Member Jessica Woolard. Ms. Woolard, please come forward with your family. Jessica Woolard is a dedicated and compassionate member of the J.N. Freeze community, known for her boundless generosity and readiness to support anyone in need. Her problem-solving skills, kindness, and commitment to helping students, staff, and families make her a trusted and invaluable colleague. Jessica's bilingual abilities allow her to build meaningful connections with families, providing cultural insights that strengthen the school's bond with the diverse community it serves. Ms. Woolard's positive energy and welcoming presence are felt by all, students, coworkers, parents, and visitors alike. She is an exceptional advocate, especially for Hispanic families, ensuring that every student has the support needed to thrive. Her warmth, dedication, and collaborative spirit embody the heart of J.N. Freeze, making her a truly inspiring role model for the entire school community. Congratulations, Jessica. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for J.N. Freeze STEM Middle School. And finally, from J.N. Freeze is Teacher Christina Beck. Ms. Beck, please come forward with your family. Christina Beck is a remarkable educator with an unwavering commitment to her students and colleagues. Known for her giant heart, Ms. Beck's passion for education and dedication to her students' success is evident in every interaction she has. This year, she has embraced a new role with immense determination, pouring 110% into ensuring that each student is supported with care and fidelity. As an extraordinary EC teacher, Ms. Beck brings not only expertise, but also a selfless drive to help her colleagues by sharing resources, strategies, and insight. She is always the first to step up, whether it's assisting a fellow teacher, developing customized strategies to reach students, or offering emotional and educational support. Students feel instantly seen and valued when she enters the classroom, and her ability to connect with them is unmatched. Ms. Beck's impact extends beyond her own classroom as she actively fosters the growth and confidence of her co-teachers, modeling best practices that promote a supportive and effective learning environment. Known for her dedication and resilience, she tackles challenges head-on with an inspiring sense of purpose. J.N. Freeze is truly fortunate to have Christina Beck, a teacher whose compassion, expertise, and dedication make a profound difference every day. Congratulations, Christina. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for J.N. Freeze STEM Middle School. This concludes our Impact Awards presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners, Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce, for your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Board members, we'll move to 7.02, our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month with Dr. Michael Williams. Welcome, Dr. Williams.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Board members, Dr. Kapiky, and to our viewing audiences both here and to those watching the livestream. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for November. We always want to begin with expressing our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for November is Jill Trot, a second grade teacher at R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Trot, her family, and the R. Brown Administrative Team in attendance to please come forward. Ms. Trot received several nominations for this award from parents at R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary. Tonight, I would like to share nominations submitted by a few of those members of the R. Brown McAllister community. First person wrote, "Ms. Trot goes above and beyond on a daily basis for her kids. She has a niche for teaching the kids that is only found in one in a thousand. There is nobody more deserving of this award. If it wasn't for Ms. Trot's passion for teaching, I am not sure my son would have ever made it through second grade." The second person wrote, "Ms. Trot is so positive and passionate. She does an amazing job bringing excitement to education, and we appreciate her efforts. Ms. Trot is always sharing pictures and projects from the school day so I can better engage with my child at home. She is the definition of what a good teacher should be." Ms. Trot, thank you for the impact you've made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your classroom, and congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Okay, Board members, we'll move to 7.03, our Rise Award Recognition with Mr. Cortland Reeves. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kupicki, and our viewing audiences both here and via livestream. In 2019, Congress passed, and the U.S. Department of Education now oversees, an award recognizing classified school employees. The Recognizing Inspiring School Employees Award, or RISE Award, is intended to honor and promote our classified school employees who provide exemplary service to students. Nominees demonstrate excellence in work performance, school and community involvement, leadership and commitment, local support, and enhancement of school employees' image in the community and in our schools. The Human Resources Department would like to recognize our district winner of the RISE Award, Ms. Nellie Noons, Data Manager at Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary School. Ms. Noons, please come forward with your family and any members of the Coltrane Webb Admin Team. Ms. Noons was nominated by her principal, Ms. Megan Smith, who said, "Ms. Noons has demonstrated unwavering dedication and excellence in her role, having served as both a teacher assistant and now as the school's data manager. Her work performance is unparalleled at both the school and district levels. Her leadership extends beyond her primary responsibilities as she serves as the backup care manager, interpreter, and steadfast advocate and friend to families and students at Coltrane Webb." During the selection process, Ms. Noons shared her strong sense of community, which was ingrained in her as a child growing up in rural Puerto Rico. She credits her time in the Coast Guard, together with her upbringing, as pillars in creating her character and love for helping others. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Nellie Noons on being the RISE Award winner for Cabarrus County Schools for the 24-25 school year.
We will move to 7.04, our Everyday Hero Award winner with Mr. John Legrand and Ms. Amber Diggins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Kupicki. This evening, we are very proud to present the Everyday Hero Award for the month of November. This award is presented monthly to an employee within our auxiliary services department, which includes our Kids Plus, facilities maintenance, construction, student nutrition, and transportation departments. This award is intended to recognize the outstanding but behind-the-scenes work that often goes unnoticed. As we all know, there is great work being done daily by these employees that should be recognized publicly, and we are excited to do so tonight. I would like to now turn it over to the Director of our Cabarrus County Schools Kids Plus Program, Mrs. Amber Diggins, to recognize this month's recipient.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is an absolute pleasure today to be standing here to introduce a very special person who truly embodies what it means to be an everyday hero. I would like to ask that Ms. Amorous Branscombe and her family join us. Today, we are recognizing Amorous, our incredible site coordinator for Fehr Kids Plus. She has made an indelible mark on both our team and the children we serve. Amorous has worked for Kids Plus for just over seven years. She started out as a group leader at Patriots Kids Plus, where she quickly became a strong leader. She was promoted to Site Coordinator in 2020 and served at Boger Kids Plus before accepting a transfer to Fehr, where she currently serves. What makes Amorous so deserving of this recognition is not just her work ethic but the energy and enthusiasm that she brings every single day. Whether it's brainstorming creative ideas for activities, stepping in to lend a hand when needed, or simply sharing her expertise with her colleagues, she has an unmatched ability to lead by example. She takes initiative, always stepping up when there's a need, and her ambition pushes us all to strive for excellence. But it's not just her work that makes her stand out, it's her authenticity and adaptability, qualities that allow her to connect with everyone she works with, from the children to her peers. Her witty and creative approach to problem solving and her willingness to share ideas have inspired many of us to think outside the box and try new things. Amorous consistently goes above and beyond, and her lasting impact on the kids and staff alike is truly remarkable. She doesn't just help create fun, engaging experiences for the children, she also creates an environment where her colleagues feel supported, valued, and inspired to give their best. Amorous, we are so proud to honor you with the Everyday Hero Award. Thank you for everything you do. Your dedication and passion don't go unnoticed, and we're incredibly fortunate to have you on our team.
Okay, board members, we'll move to 8.01, the Approval of Minutes. I will call for a motion to approve the open session minutes for October 7th and 14th. Does that move? I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Thank you, board members. We will move to 9.01, Board Chair Comments. I'd like to congratulate the new board members that won the election, that will be serving on the board starting December the 2nd: Mr. Rob Walter, Ms. Catherine Moore, Ms. Melanie Freeman, and Mr. Greg Mills. I'd also like to recog- I'd also like to recognize the board members that are coming off of this board, that have served here for four years. Ms. Lindsay, I think you've served here for six years. So, Mr. Brian Floyd, Ms. Keesa Sandage, Ms. Laura Lindsay, and myself will be coming off this board. And I just have to say that has been an honor and a privilege to serve on this Board of Education, and I want to thank the citizens of Cabarrus County for electing me and these others that are here. It's been a long four years, but it's been a great time, and just knowing what's invested in this school system as far as all the employees and the staff that work here, it's been quite an honor. So, thank you very much. We'll move to 9.02 with our Superintendent Comments with Dr. John Kupicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Adcock. First and foremost, to our Cabarrus County School employees who are veterans or active service members, and to the families with loved ones in the armed forces, thank you for your service and sacrifice. Last week, many of our schools held events to honor local veterans, and I was honored to attend the motorcycle parade and student performance at WM Irvin and meet many veterans from the WM Irvin community. Our district takes great pride in our veterans. On behalf of the district, we salute them and thank them for their unwavering dedication to our country. Please be sure to check out the CCS Facebook and Instagram pages for highlights of last week's events that were captured by our communications teams. And please, while it's important that we honor our veterans on Veterans Day, I would encourage all of our community members to thank our veterans on a regular basis when we see them out and about in our community. They give the ultimate sacrifice, and we are deeply appreciative for all of their service. So, thank you to all of them. The upcoming holidays, we are preparing for the Thanksgiving break, and I want to take a moment to express my gratitude for the dedication and resilience of our school staff, students, and families. This season is a special time to reflect on the blessings in our lives, and I am thankful for the commitment each of you brings to our school community. Whether you're traveling or staying close to home, I wish you a safe, restful, and joyful holiday. As a reminder, students will be out of school from Wednesday, November 27th, through Monday, December 2nd. All of our schools and facilities will be closed on November 28th and 29th. Program choice applications for the 2025-26 school year will be open through Sunday, December 15th, 2024. Parent notification of placement will occur in the online family dashboard the week of February 3rd, 2025. Parents will have until Monday, February 17th, 2025, to make a decision and accept a seat in their online dashboard. Any seats not accepted within this window will be forfeited to the wait-listed students. For more information or to apply, please visit our district website. We will be holding our Fall Financial Aid Workshop, and we will be hosting this in-person financial aid workshop with the College Foundation of North Carolina on November 19th at 6:30 PM at J.M. Robinson High School. This event is intended for parents of juniors and seniors in high school regarding how to fill out the free application for federal student aid form and other important financial aid and scholarship resources. I'd also like to echo the comments from our Board Chair Denise Adcock. I want to thank Keesa Sandage, Brian Floyd, and Denise Adcock for their service and dedication to our students here in Cabarrus County. We see the upfront work, but I can tell you that there's a lot of selfless work that goes on behind the scenes. They have been nothing but supportive and dedicated to our students here in Cabarrus County. I appreciate that leadership, and I wish them all the best in all their future endeavors, and I thank them very much for the dedication to our students. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Rob Walters, Catherine Bonds-Moore, Greg Mills, and Melanie Freeman on their recent election to the school board. We welcome you, and we look forward to working with you as you become new board members in December. So, we are excited about that as well. And then lastly, I'd like to congratulate Laura Lindsay for leaving us. But as she embarks on a new position with the county as a county commissioner, I also look forward to working with her, and know that I'll have an advocate at the county commissioner level working with us at that level. So, I thank Laura for all of her service and dedication, and look forward to a continued relationship there as well. Then lastly, I would just like to announce that the local government commission today did approve our funding for Mary Frances Waller the Opportunity School and the building of Coltrane Webb Elementary School. So, those projects that are in progress, they will continue to be in progress, and they were approved this afternoon. So, I thank everyone for their hard work on those projects as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will move to 9.03 with our Board Attorney Comments. Mr. Eisenhower, do you have anything for the board?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, we'll move to 10.01 with our Committee Reports. Are there any committee reports, Ms. Escobar?
I just want to thank all the people that are meeting with our interns. I really appreciate the time and effort that it takes to organize your presentations, talk about what the school district is doing. Last week, or a couple weeks ago, excuse me, we met with social workers, and they were talking about the work that they do in our schools. And we are going to be, our service project for this year will be, on March 25th, will be the Hispanic Resource Family Night, excuse me. And so, that's an opportunity for anyone in the district to get connected to resources throughout our community. So, I just want to stress the importance of that, that event, for people in our community to know about those resources. But I also want to stress that you don't have to wait until March 25th to get that information. So, if you are connected to our schools, you have trusted adults, safe adults, who are in your buildings, who care about you, who will take care of you, and so if you need help or resources, and you need to be connected to things that are outside of our school, that's open to families as well. So, I just want to make that clear to lots of groups in our schools right now that might not know or might feel like they're not loved right now. So, that is to anybody who has English as a second language, that's for any of our transgender kids, that is for any females that might feel like they need a trusted adult. There are plenty of them in our schools. I am so grateful, I am so thankful that they work for Cabarrus County Schools, and I want to thank you for the continued work that you will do for our students throughout this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Floyd?
Thank you. As representative of the Safety Committee, I want to kind of use a moment to make sure that we all reflect on, and that is the safe or unsafe situations that maybe we can unintentionally create out there and in here. You know, public comment is very, it's very good. It helps us a lot, helps us get our finger on the pulse of things. We want you to come speak, we want you to be vocal, we want you to not be afraid to bring issues to us. We want to be responsible when we do that, and we want to be responsible when we listen to it as well. You know, we had a situation last month, you know, that kind of got, maybe by some definitions, out of control. You know, a man came in, very passionate topic, he never said it, but the way the internet took it was that an unsafe situation happened for our children, a specific child in a school. And it was allowed to believe that the school system allowed it to happen, and the school system also said they wouldn't do anything about it. That spiraled out of control online. You should see some of the threats that some of us received for that, and that's not what my issue is. My issue is, in today's age, how much of a stretch is it to think somebody would take it to the next step and show up at a school with a baseball bat, with a gun? And we need to really think about that, not just when we speak, but also when we listen. So, please do bring these matters to us. You can email us about us, you can reach out to us personally, but also let's be considered about what we do and what kind of situation we're creating and what our intention is, because I don't think anybody's intention is to create a dangerous situation when they come in here. I don't think anybody's intention is to create a dangerous situation when they stand up to speak. I don't think that gentleman intended to, and I'm not singling him out, it happens all the time with many issues. But it's something we need to be mindful of, because that creates a dangerous situation for students and staff and administrators of school to have to prepare for and to answer. So, let's all be mindful of that, especially in today's society. I think we're at a good point where we can maybe reset how we see each other, how we listen to each other, how we speak to each other, and see if we make this a safer place for our kids and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Okay, board members, anything else from anyone? Okay, we will move to 10.02, our Budget Summary and Board Report with Ms. Kim Aldridge and Carrie Cox.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Board, Dr. Kupicki. I'm gonna try and fill in for Phil. This is the monthly financial position that we're in currently. At this point of this fiscal year, most of the expenditures are tracking at or near where we're expecting them to be, but there are two areas of concern, and we'll continue monitoring those as we go throughout the year. One is the legal expenses. Over the first quarter of the fiscal year, totaled almost $185,000, or an annual run rate of almost $740,000. Our full budget for legal expenses is $500,000. So, most of that is related to expenses due to litigation and EC-related matters. The second item, the state legislator met again on October 24th, and of course, they focused exclusively on the hurricane relief legislation. As- As a result, the House Bill 10, which contained the language necessary to fund the LEAs experiencing ADM growth, has not been reconsidered for a veto override. Given the change in the state's funding model in funding in arrears for our growth, the potential impact to Cabarrus County Schools is material for this school year. So, the General Assembly will be reconvening, or will convene in November the 19th, so hopefully by then they'll be able to address that. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, board members? Ms. Sandage?
So, just to go back to the legal fees and just make sure that that's clear for folks, we budget for a certain amount, and there's a likelihood to go over that budget when there is folks who sue the school district, or can you explain if there's something else that attributes to that increase in the legal fees?
Correct, yes. So, any litigation that we have to do, that it will cost us more money, and at this run rate, we're going to be approximately $240,000 over budget.
So, and the budget is set by the school board, and can you tell us when the last time that budgeted amount has been reviewed? I'm just guessing, as a normal person, my groceries are higher than they were 10 years ago, so I would guess that we should look at...
Right.
I'm just guessing.
Yeah, so, I can tell you that we take the accounts, we look at those by quarter, which is the quarterly update that you're getting right now, and the board was given those legal expenses for the last 12 years recently, as long as, as well as a month-to-month report that we gave to the board as well. So, I would say every quarter, we take a hard look at to see where we are. Over the last 12 years, we've averaged above $500,921 per year in legal expenses. Some years are higher than that, some are lower. A more intense look at it, over the last five years, we've averaged $603,386 per year in legal expenses. And Mrs. Aldridge is correct, a lot of that is tied to the litigation costs of defending the district in the litigation matters that come about in various situations throughout the course of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Walter?
So, I guess typically, if you go over budget, you can take some funds from a different account or different area and move it to cover for that.
Correct, yeah. You will see a legitimate amendment.
So, how concerned are we with going over? Are we okay?
We never like to go over our budget.
Right, that's the reality, though, and it's not looking like it's going to be, we're not, we're not going to stop our attorney from doing his work, as things come to us every day.
We always figure it out with your help.
Okay, and then the other number, did you have a dollar amount on that second item or an idea of what the dollar amount was?
No, do not.
Do not.
The funding in arrears, we do anticipate, Mr. Walter, that's going to be over, that'll be an override by the Assembly when they reconvene. I can't confirm the 100%, but I've had some informal conversation. I do anticipate that that'll be, there'll be an override there, and the funding in arrears will come our way.
Okay, but we don't have a dollar amount?
No, I don't, it's kind of hard to predict at this moment.
Any other questions, board members, about that? Mr. Floyd?
So, when I looked at the numbers, it looks like, you know, a lot of our litigation is specific to a certain field. When it comes to educating EC kids, very complicated, more than you would think for the many reasons. It's very legally fickle, for lack of a better word. So, understanding that not only are our numbers growing, our EC population is growing, is there a way to model, to anticipate for things like that when we're setting our budget in the future? How do we come up with that number, if I may ask?
I think you look at averages, so the half a million dollars is looked at, the 12-year average, but the five-year average is probably a number we need to pay more attention to because our costs for litigation are increasing, fees for expenditures, as we know, the per-hour fees are definitely going up as well. So, I think it's just you got to look at the averages and the trends and try and prepare as best you can.
Anything else, board members? Okay, thank you so much for the report.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we will move to our action agenda. Our first item is 11.01, 2425 Budget Resolution and Budget Amendment, number one.
Okay, it's me again. So, here you will see the budget resolution that has been balanced now. As a result, you'll see there is $700,000 budget, not mean fund balance appropriated in Fund II, and it was approved by the board in October, and a reduction in the estimated cost of short-term agreements, that short-term agreements that were budgeted in Fund VIII. So, we're now able to present a balanced, restated budget resolution for the 2425 totaling $467 million.
Is there any questions, board members, about this budget amendment resolution?
I make a motion, we approve this as presented.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Tradaway, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, this resolution and budget amendment are approved as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members will move to 11.02, our Fund Balance Appropriation for Student Chromebooks.
Before I turn it over to Mr. San, I would like to briefly recap the fund balance situation that we have. Our total fund balances is $9.8 million. Unassigned of that is like 8.1, so that's a total of $17.9 million. And we're asking, these three projects total $4.8 million, which is the Apple lease, that's already been approved, a .7 million, the Chromebooks, which you'll be hearing about today, and Sarah will be talking to you about the ELA, $2.8 million. So, and this will leave us like a $3.3 million, which is what you have recommended to stay within the board policy, 8101.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapicki, members of the board and the community. As mentioned, this presentation requests appropriation of $1.3 million of fund balance towards the purchase of Chromebooks for student use. Cabarrus County Schools operates all student and staff devices with regular refresh cycles. Chromebooks are typically built to last for three to five years in an educational, in an educational setting. And keep in mind that a consistent refresh cycle is primarily for the purposes of these three goals: budget predictability over a long-term timeframe, reduce downtime so that we can replace devices before there's an anticipated end of life, and then increase security. Obviously, aging hardware sometimes loses support, there are automatic updates that come out after end of life, and those devices are no longer supported. So, the idea is for us to refresh our Chromebooks at least, and the most ambitious timeframe would be five years, and an ideal timeframe would be three years. This slide shows our current devices and students, so we are right now one-to-one, meaning we have a device for every student in our district. In kindergarten and first grade, we are one-to-one utilizing iPads. In second grade through 12th grade, we are providing Chromebooks for all students. How these devices are used varies slightly between teachers and between schools, but these are typically used for accessing and completing assignments. They are used for collaborating on projects, they're used for taking assessments and engaging in interactive lessons. As we anticipate an approach to 36,000 students across grades K through 12, we would ideally have at least that number of devices on hand, as well as an additional 10% in order to supply loaner devices when repairing or replacing devices. Which is that we would ideally purchase approximately 40,000 devices over that five-year cycle in order to maintain one-to-one. Cabarrus County Schools, as you can see, in year one, purchased 5,310 iPads back in July with the approval of this board. A purchase of 3,000 Chromebooks this year would keep us on track towards 8,000 devices this year. Keep in mind, these devices are critical to make it through the remainder of this school year as a one-to-one district. Obviously, if we do not purchase these right now, then we would have a shortfall of Chromebooks in subsequent years. As far as the details of this plan, we would leverage existing state contracts to execute a purchase of 3,000 Chromebooks. The anticipated cost is $1.3 million. This purchase price includes a five-year warranty, meaning if there's any accidental damage to those Chromebooks, that's a consistent warranty with what we currently have. We send the entire Chromebook back, they send us a brand-new one. This includes sales tax and white glove service deployment, which means they set the Chromebooks up and they deliver them to us so that we can get them in students' hands as quickly as possible. Of course, we would bring the purchase contract to the Board of Ed when ready, and we would obviously engage in ongoing discussion of long-term device needs. So, for right now, we are asking for the appropriation of $1.3 million to generate this contract.
Is there any discussion, board members? Ms. Escobar?
So, I'm looking at the chart on Slide 3. This is only going to cover us for one year, so even though we're anticipating, we want, our objective is to buy 8,000 each of the subsequent years, there's no guarantee that we'll get it at this rate, correct?
That's right. If we were to, in order to stay one-to-one, we would need to purchase approximately 40,000 over the five. What this would do is get us to the 8,000 number for this school year. That's correct.
Okay, and so, we haven't negotiated a contract for future, we're just looking at just getting through this year?
That's right. Historically, we've purchased some Chromebooks with an outright purchase. There's been some times we've used a lease. Since this is, since we're appropriating those funds out of the fund balance, we wanted it to be just using that money and not using subsequent years' money for that, for a lease. So, instead of trying to engage into a contract using this money that would also tie up money for future years, we just wanted to make it a one-time purchase using those available funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Lindsay?
Okay, so, help me, or I guess remind me, the fund balance. The last time we, or when we talked about using fund balance, we talked about using any overages in there for deferred maintenance. So, obviously, we're not going to want to keep using fund balance for Chromebooks. So, moving forward, what is the mechanism? How are we going to stop this from happening so that we don't have to use fund balance for this?
Very good question. Excuse me. We just engaged in conversation today, myself, and Mr. San, and several other members of Cabinet. One of the things we're looking at is, there's no walking away from providing the technology to our students in the classrooms, but one of the things we are looking at is how we deliver that, and do we need to be one-to-one across the board, K to 12? We're looking strongly at the elementary situation right now and seeing where the best usage is for those devices. Is it a one-to-two or one-to-three? One of the things we don't want is to have our kids always on a computer, on a laptop, and I'm not saying that they are, but we're definitely trying to get a really good grasp as to what's the best use of the technology in the classroom. So, Mr. San has put together several different presentations that I've taken, have had the ability to take a look at today, and there are a couple of different scenarios where we're trying to reduce the cost of what we spend on technology in the classroom. So, that's one way we're looking at it. The other thing we need to take a look at is the contracts and the lease agreements. Do we lease? Do we buy? What's the purchase on the buybacks when we're looking at it? So, there's a lot of things in play that we're taking a look at before we start developing that budget for the next couple of years. But I do think that initially, the best way to take a look at this is to probably reduce or to take a look at the one-to-one usage in the primary grades, and we don't think it's necessary to be necessarily one-to-one, especially the primary grades. So, we're looking at reducing some of that usage in the classroom and spreading that out over the intermediate and the high school grades.
Can I add on? In an ideal world, we would have, as it's laid out, what we're going to anticipate the cost being over multiple years, so that we have a set cost established into the budget, so that it's not year by year, we're trying to figure out how many iPads, four Chromebooks we need to purchase.
Yeah, to stay where I'm at, to give you a rough number, we're looking at about $20 million to continue to replace these year over year, so you're looking at about over the next five years, a $4 million budget allotment to replace what we have currently in place, which is why we're taking a look at, do we really need to replace everything, and what's the best use of the funds for our students in the classroom?
I'm just going to add that I'm happy to hear you say that, because I definitely agree with you. I don't think that it necessarily needs to be, especially in the elementary level, a one-to-one for that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I'll kind of second that. I don't think that's sustainable to have 40,000 devices and expect that to be paid for every year. How much are we, how much per device, what is the unit price?
The quoted price that we've got is $380 per device. That includes the Chromebook, that includes white glove service, so that they set the Chromebook up and send it to us, ready to put in students' hands. That includes a five-year warranty and then some associated licenses for application.
And you've kind of compared the prices, and that's...
That's using the state contract, which is going to facilitate the process and get these Chromebooks into students' hands as quick as possible.
And the delivery date on these would be when?
I'm sorry?
The delivery date would be when?
We have not engaged in the contract. We wanted to get the funds approved first, so we did not, I didn't have a delivery date.
Then what are you trying to do? I mean, is this for next school year?
No, this would be...
Put it in place this school year?
This would be, as soon as, as soon as we can get, if this fund balance is appropriated, we would turn around tomorrow and generate the contract, and then we would bring that to the next board meeting.
Then you'd have to determine what school gets these or what school doesn't?
That's right. Right now, we've allocated our existing Chromebooks, one per student with about 10% overage. As you can imagine, that number of supply is diminishing day by day, so this would supplement what we currently have in schools.
I mean, in the past, you'd say it was a four-year replacement cycle. I'm glad to say it's a five-year now, but still substantially expensive to continue that, so I'm glad we're looking, we'll be looking at ways to reduce this cost.
Any other questions? I just have one. Do they give us any money for returning older Chromebooks? Do they?
When we return a damaged Chromebook, we get $2. What we typically do is we, the term is cannibalize, we cannibalize it for parts, and then we're able to use those parts to restore other Chromebooks. Turning it in is not a feasible option.
Okay. Ms. Sandage?
So, just for perspective and reminding me as well, the reason for this cost came from COVID and all of the kids needing a Chromebook. So, it's, at this point, you determine what's the best use going forward, and that's why we're here. I just wanted to kind of bring perspective. We were getting money for this initially, and now we are not. Am I remembering that correctly?
According to the financial records that I was able to come across, both from our budget and from looking at past school board meetings, we purchased 15,000 Chromebooks in the year 2020. We purchased 13,600 Chromebooks in the year 2021. I do not have funding sources for that, but presumably, a lot of that was ESSER funding. Since 2021, we have purchased 4,500 Chromebooks.
I just wanted to make sure we remembered why we are here and not necessarily blaming that the issue is the school district. I just want us to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, board members, I need a motion to approve the Fund Balance Appropriation for Chromebooks as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The appropriation is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move to 11.03, the Fund Balance Appropriation for the ELA Curriculum with Ms. Sarah Reeves. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki with me today. Hi, Tracy Hayes, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Nice to see you all. Awesome. So, we are extremely excited to share with you today the Fund Balance Appropriation for ELA Curriculum. So, as we've discussed in Destination 2025, one of our biggest commitments is making sure that we have a quality of high expectations for all students and being able to set the bar across all of our schools, kindergarten through eighth grade specifically, as it relates to maintaining rigorous core instructional practices. And we firmly believe that this is the next step in making sure that we become the best in the nation, specifically as it relates to provisioning high-quality ELA curriculum. So, as we have shared with you on many occasions, we continue to go through our continuous improvement cycle, and so, over the last year, we've really talked about the assessment specifically, not only as it relates to student assessment data, but also gathering quantitative feedback from our staff members. And we have heard loud and clear that we need high-quality, rigorous curricular materials versus searching the internet or trying to find things specifically as it relates to a lot of our resources having copyright balances, and that is what brought us here today. So, I'd be remiss not to mention just the importance of a KELA curriculum. So, out of... of the Big Ten school districts across the state of North Carolina, we are currently the only school district that does not have a curriculum that has been purchased for our kindergarten through eighth-grade teachers specifically, as it relates to having high-quality ELA texts in the hands of all of our staff members. And so as we have continued to survey staff and our staff engagement surveys last year, and then we also highlighted that in a K-8 educator curriculum needs assessment this fall, we heard loud and clear from our educators, as well as our administrative staff in our elementary and middle schools, that they not only needed, but they wanted to be able to have high-quality, rigorous curricular materials available to them. Obviously, this provides consistent and coherent foundation across all of our schools, regardless of whether you have a seasoned veteran teacher or a beginning teacher. We can make sure that we're putting in the hands of our teachers those resources. Additionally, as we continue to serve a diverse population of students, we want to make sure that they have access to those resources. And last but not least, one of the things that I'm remarkably proud of is we talk to a lot of educators across the county. The thing that I think makes Cabarrus very unique is that we really wanted to prioritize promoting engagement and motivation. So we're not looking at purchasing a textbook brazel reader. We really want to make sure we instill a love of reading for all of our students in actually selecting high-quality, authentic texts that they would see in a library or out at a bookstore versus something that would be prepackaged from a vendor. So as Ms. Reeves shared, our educators in our district really are asking and needing and deserving a high-quality resource so that we can promote reading and writing, speaking and listening in our district. And so about the time last year, we launched a selection process to begin reviewing what is out there across the state. So we spoke to many of our colleagues across the state to see what curricular resources were they using. That included us visiting some of those and seeing it in action. And so from there, learning a little bit about what's happening across the state of North Carolina, we knew we needed to start looking more carefully at some of these resources. And so we created a list of approximately about eight for elementary and eight for middle, where we looked carefully at the criteria as shown on the screen. Does it align to the science of reading? We know the importance of that, especially at the foundational early years in elementary. We also believe that our kids deserve a coherent experience when it comes to literacy K-8, so that was another priority we wanted to see. As Ms. Reeves mentioned, we really want kids to love reading and writing, and so we wanted to promote that through curricular resources where they would actually have text in hand and have the opportunities to engage with that. Also, the importance of aligning to our standard of course of study as it relates to what North Carolina says we need to teach. So those were some of the criteria we used. And we also used Ed Reports, which is a nonprofit that helps educators determine what's high-quality, and we vetted those resources against those Ed Reports and our own criteria. And from there, we narrowed down to three. And so as Ms. Reeves mentioned, we did solicit a needs assessment from our educators back in September, and that helped inform us where we got to the three, because we knew they also deserve high-quality resources that have input from them. And so as part of our process, we did the needs assessment. And then ongoing, we have an upcoming curriculum program preview fair on December 4th that is scheduled, where these three vendors that you'll see momentarily will be sharing with teachers across our district these resources, and they can hear directly from them in order to vet those and provide some of that important input we need from them. After that, we will also launch a larger survey for all staff to participate in, as well as a parent survey, because we believe the importance of stakeholder feedback as it relates to what materials we're getting in front of our kids. And so that will be an important part of our overall adoption process. So the next couple of slides, you're going to see the names of the three vendors we have narrowed down to, that our staff will be able to see firsthand on December 4th and provide additional feedback as it lines to a rubric that we've created with the criteria. So Arcs and Letters is one, Arc, American Reading Company, and then last, Wit and Wisdom. So those are the three resources, based off the criteria, based off of Ed Reports, and knowing what our staff has said they need in curricular resources. This is where we are. So with that being said, all of this is tentative and pending, obviously, the approval of funding. However, the draft timeline for adoption, we are recommending starting in the fall of next year, looking specifically at grade second through fifth grade and then sixth grade, and then the following year, adding on or layering in kindergarten through first grade and then seventh through eighth grade. And again, all of this is generated based on our needs assessment, what we already know to be true about what's provisioned in our curriculum and where there are gaps and needs. Our ultimate goal is obviously consistency and continuity, making sure that that is able to happen. But again, the draft timeline is pending a lot of different factors, specifically fiscally. So as Ms. Hayes shared, we would begin with a tentative curriculum preview fair, December 4th, where our vendors would come and present. This is tentatively scheduled at Roberta Road Middle School. The intentionality is selecting lead teachers from all of our schools, representing all of the grade levels, kindergarten through eighth grade. So even if potentially you would not adopt that year, we want the input of all of our teachers. We need the input of all of our teachers. This would include our ML teachers, EC teachers, so we have diverse representation on this group that will be able to hear from all three vendors, use a developed rubric criteria to provide input, and certainly looking specifically through the lens of the content area experts in those grade levels. From there, ultimately, our goal would be to take that data and narrow it down to two vendors, that we could then be able to open up a electronic live survey input that would, we would be soliciting feedback from all our parents and guardians, as well as the remaining staff that could not attend the December 4th program preview fair. We want as much input as possible. Obviously, on December 4th, we're going to be looking very closely at criteria such as standards alignment. But for the stakeholder input from a parent perspective, we want things that parents would want to be looking for. Is this a curriculum that your child would be excited about? What resources would you want to see as a parent in terms of at-home supports, those types of things? From there, our goal would be on December 20th, to be able to have a vendor finalist recommendation to then move forward into the 2026 school, 2025 school year, where we would take that to the CNI Committee according to Policy 3200. Ideally, we would come back to the Board of Education in early 2025 with a recommendation for purchase. So again, tonight is not about committing to a curriculum, it's just simply committing to being able to utilize the funding to provision a high-quality curriculum for all of our staff members. And then ultimately, in this early spring of 2025, we would be able to move forward with a purchase to begin talking about professional development and getting our staff ready to launch the pilot year in the fall of 2025. So this is a little bit more information about the preview fair, but again, we want as much representation from all of our schools as possible. We want to make sure that our teacher experts have the ability to weigh in and specifically evaluate the programs against the criteria listed here, which are all aligned to our instructional framework. And much of this language is very, very familiar to all of our staff and administrators. And then again, immediately following that, we will have the virtual preview fair. And again, this is ultimately meant to be able to provision flexibility. Many of our families work, they're not able to come out to an actual fair where they can preview the material. So all of this will be available electronically, online, where families have the ability to preview the curricular resources and then provide their input, being a Google form. And so this evening, obviously, we're coming to you with a request to utilize fund balance appropriations to be able to support this work as we begin to talk about a K through 8 ELA curriculum adoption in Cabarrus County schools.
Board members, we have questions. Ms. Sandage?
So I'm going to ask, so why, I get that we haven't done this, and we're doing it, we're starting fresh because of the need. But my question is about why were we not in that group of 10 of the largest school districts that, that's what I want to understand. It seemed like you know what I'm asking.
Yeah, so I would say, I think, a multitude of reasons. The first of which, we've talked about this a little bit, for funding access. As you can see, $2.8 million is not a small amount of money. And therefore, obviously, as school systems have had different access to resources, specifically, I've mentioned before, the disadvantaged student funding ratio specifically in Cabarrus County, it does not give us that allocation to be able to do a curriculum adoption purchase of this size. Additionally, previously, we were very proud of the curriculum that we were able to build. Much of that curriculum actually was built on open-source resources that are now, in the last couple of years, as ESSER has dissolved, gone behind paid walls. And so where it used to be free for us to be able to send teachers and navigate them to these free open-source sites, they now no longer exist. So I would say, previously, we were able to leverage a lot of open-source free resources for our curriculum when a lot of other school systems were using adoptions, and we're no longer in that place anymore to sustain that funding model.
And so you're requesting for fund balance usage tonight, but ultimately, I would see that this would be beneficial to help us raise grades for our schools, to give students what they need as it relates to being able to read, and the, you know, the measures that are placed in front of them. But where does it come from going forward? Like, what's the good place for this in the budget going forward? Because I can foresee, we're not going to be able to get $2.8 million out of fund balance.
This is something that we will definitely put in the local budget request for this year to fund the other half of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Lindsay?
So help me understand, so since we haven't even picked the person, like the group-
We have not picked a curricular program, no ma'am.
So I guess the $2.8 million, approving that tonight, what, what do we need to approve it tonight for, since we have not even chosen a curriculum group yet that we're using? And I ask that because, you know, quite a large sum, obviously, coming from fund balance, yes. Five people on this board are about to go off, and there's going to be a whole new board up here. So I'm just wondering, is there a time constraint for us approving this $2.8 million tonight, before we even know which organization we're going, or curriculum we're going to be using?
That's a great question. So we intentionally have priced out all of the vendors that we have previewed, as Ms. Hayes has shared. I think one of the biggest commitments that we want to make is that if we're engaging all of our stakeholders in this, that we have an understanding that we are actually going to be committing to following through with an execution of giving this product or resource to our families. So if we're soliciting the feedback of all of our teachers and families, we want to make sure that we're intentional about being able to commit to something in the fall of 2025, especially given the timeline that we will need to not only provide the, obviously going through the rubric, the professional development, the purchase of the contract. It typically takes about eight to nine months to be able to launch all of that.
Could you please put the timeline back up, too?
Sure.
So to your question, Mrs. Lindsay, it's a fair question. Ultimately, in early 2025, we do the school board presentation. The board will have to approve what we choose. So you're approving us the funding so we can commit, commit's not the right word, so we can continue to negotiate with the companies that we've chosen. That's the high end. I have found over my career, they usually negotiate these things through, and a lot of trade-offs are negotiated there when you're dealing with these companies. The other thing you want to ask a lot about is, what's the professional development commitment of the company to provide to our staff? But you'll see that even though you're committing the fund, you're committing the funding to it, but nothing has been approved. The new board will approve the ultimate curriculum that we choose and come with a recommendation in early 2025.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, along large lines, it's a big amount. It's a big amount. I mean, typically, we would have something presented to us in a work session. We have an opportunity to hear the public's response to that before we vote on something. I'm just not comfortable being presented with it today and then trying to vote and asked, being asked to vote on it today without any feedback from our public. And then it is a, you know, there's lots of trade-offs. You're going to put $2.8 million into this. Oh, what else is there? I mean, that's what the budget process is for. It seems to be bypassing the budget process, which I understand you want to get it done by next year, which is admirable. I mean, it seems like something that we need, our teachers are going to need. But it's a lot, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money to spend and a lot of money to commit before we really know a whole lot of information. I mean, is there a way to pilot project, pilot something?
Well, I would encourage you not to pilot on this. This, I think, is what's gotten us in the situation when right now. We don't have a standard curriculum or something that is across the district from one school to the next. I also think it's a disservice to our teachers to ask them to walk in the classrooms every day without a curriculum that they can lean into and use to make sure that we get consistent results. I think part of the problem that we're seeing in, across our grade, our grade levels is that we don't have a curriculum. And it's not anyone's fault, I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, but it is highly unusual to not have a reading curriculum in your district. You know, the number one thing we do in elementary schools is teach kids how to read. If you don't have a curriculum that teachers can use to follow the standards and follow a consistent curriculum across the board, it's very difficult to do. So, yeah, it is costly. There's no around the cost. It is very expensive to buy curriculums, but it's also incredible, it's one of those deals where you pay me now or pay me later. You're, in my opinion, professionally, we're hurting kids by not having a consistent curriculum in the school system that our teachers can count on and rely on to implement with efficacy across the district, that we're getting good, solid, consistent lessons, both form and summative assessments, feedback from the students as to how they interact with the curriculum, and many more things that variables are going to play here. You don't want your, and again, it's not a, our teachers are fabulous. I don't think anyone would argue that. But it's not fair to have teachers be pulling resources from all over the place and saying, "Go teach kids in first grade how to read. Go teach kids in second grade how to use resources you think are worthwhile in the classroom." They do a good job of it. It's amazing what they do with the little that they have. And reminding the board, we've just invested a ton of time through the state initiative of the science of reading, continue to offer professional development on that. And we've seen the results that Letterland has done, Hagerty has done, the phonemic awareness, the phonemic awareness and the phonics development that those programs have produced for our kids, our teachers to use. So the next step, the national next step, is to have a curriculum in place. It's just, it's not appropriate to not have a reading curriculum in your schools. It's just not. And it is going to be costly. I understand that the hesitation, say, you see the big ticket, ticket out of $2.8 million, but that's what it's going to cost you. And we're not saying that we're, again, the new board will approve this in 2025. We'll have to come back again and give that presentation. We're not going to spend a dime until that board approves it. But we need to have some kind of vested, vested stake in the game here with the vendors, when bringing them in. There's no way around this. We're going to, and I would really not want to put this off, because the longer we put it off, in my professional opinion, the more we're hurting kids, and the more I think we're doing disservice to our teachers to not have the resources they need to be able to instruct our kids.
I appreciate that statement. I didn't notice this being on a budget request out of earlier this year. So again, another, another 30 days to wait until our new board is in, I think, is appropriate for this.
But again, the longer you wait, all due respect, Rob, that the heart is going to be the two. We're vested in this now. And again, we're talking about educating our kids. You don't want to push this off. You really don't. This is something that we really need to do as a district, and we're talking about reading curriculum.
I don't think we're arguing that. I think we're trying to get feedback to make a decision on $2.8 million. And you have five new people that'll, or four new people that will be coming on this board.
But they will make that decision. They're the ones that are going to, they're the ones that are going to approve whether or not we go forward with this.
On a contract on whatever, whatever we decide. That's correct, but not the money decision.
Ms. Escobar?
I just want to mention that when Phil was here last month, and we were talking about the things that we approved related to funding balance, he did say that this was part of the calculation. He said that Sarah Reeves would make the presentation today. So I recognize that we're getting the information tonight. It's also just the nature of November meeting, is that the November meeting for the holidays is a work session and a business session in one. It's just the nature of what we do in November consistently. But, but from what I understood, this is not the first time we're hearing about this expense or knowing about this expense. That's not my question, though. My question is, is the, can you go back to the logic behind the timeline if, once it's implemented? Because I thought it was interesting that we're not starting with kindergarten.
Absolutely.
And that I also appreciated the fact that middle school's not going to be short-changed. So just what's the logic on this timeframe?
Absolutely. So this is all specifically the needs assessment from the, from our schools and from our teachers, as well as our- and from our teachers, as well as our initial data points. So what we're seeing right now, based on our literacy intervention plan that we submit to the state of North Carolina, we actually have a pretty strong framework right now, specifically in kindergarten and first grade, with the purchased curriculum materials of Letterland and Hagerty. It is not necessarily comprehensive. We still need to be thinking about the comprehension, the speaking and listening, obviously, and the writing components of that, where we would want to see a through line in kindergarten through eighth grade. But to Dr. Kupicki's point, there is a lot of urgency around this. Our kids are never going to get the next year of their education back. And so what we want to be really intentional about is, how can we quickly roll this out to make sure that every child has a rigorous, high-quality educational experience in ELA classrooms, while also keeping in mind the urgency and the need for timelines? So that's really why you see that timeline there, specifically looking at, where can we hold off for a year to be able to get it right in second through fifth, and then obviously sixth grade, obviously knowing the next year, we would loop up.
Mr. Floyd?
I do want to say, I've been getting this feedback from K-8 teachers that I know and trust confidentially for a while now. And we've talked about it some, and so I mean, I appreciate what you've done. But it is, it is, it's been the number one need I've heard from them. While a lot of other things were going on, that people weren't really paying attention to. So I'm glad that we're putting something, something on the book here. I want to talk about the soliciting feedback section, because I think people might get lost because there's a lot to talk about here. This was brought to us by, based on feedback we solicited from our teachers on the ground. Okay? And we're going to continue to take feedback from them, right? And there's, parents and stakeholders get a chance to participate in this as well. And it's very important that we do, because I think everybody would agree, curriculum is important to parents. Can you just run right back through that part again? Because I don't want it to get lost in the word salad. I think that's a really important part for people who care about curriculum and care about what's being taught.
Absolutely. So I think it's important to note, this has been reflected in our budget request every single year. Whether or not it could be funded or not was up for debate. Obviously, it is a very hefty price tag. One, I will say, does not require continual funding. So this is an investment that can last almost a decade in most cases. Obviously, we would make some revisions, but this is not something where we would have a renewable cost. That is not what we are looking at. With that being said, obviously, we want to make sure that we are very intentional through our program preview fair, taking lead teachers. And then, of course, after that, the entire month of December, basically, will be committed to launching an electronic survey, where we will be asking every K-8 teacher in Cabarrus County schools, as well as our family members, through the Engage page, we've already worked with Mr. Fur on what that could look like, to be able to launch the electronic access to these curriculums, as well as a survey, gathering their input to make sure that we have as much data as possible to present to the board in January.
That's the thing, too. We're talking about kids, and that's the goal, to help kids. But we have to help our teachers help kids. We need our teachers to have those resources in their hands to be able to teach our kids. And it's just, it's not, it's not fair to our teachers. When we talk about teacher morale and why teachers are coming and going, I think, this may not be a reason, but this certainly encourages the teacher when we're starting to invest in some of the curriculum needs that they have. So when they walk in their classrooms, they could say, they could be very confident, here's the resource I'm going to use every day and I can count it. I don't have to guess, I don't have to go get it on my own. This is an investment in our teachers as well. And I believe wholeheartedly, we owe this to our teachers as well as our kids.
I agree. And also, I want to make the point, too, we're not necess, this is more or less a term that many of us can understand now very well, a GMP, right? I mean, this is a maximum that we're going to be allowed to spend on it, or the future board will be allowed to spend. So we're not handcuffing anybody to this. And the fact is, there is a future board coming, but we're the board today, and we're being asked to make a decision today. You don't just hang it up and retire, you know, for the last 30 days or 60 days and pack it in. We have work to do. So I think both sides can be true. We're not handcuffing anyone in the future, but we can also make a decision that needs to be made.
And the newly elected board will be the ones that make the final decision on this.
Ms. Sandage?
Well, Brian, you just took the words right out of my mouth. I think we need to understand that this has been up in front of us for a long time. I hear complaints all the time about these kids getting, or these schools getting these, this grades, our kids not being able to read. And they're bringing us something to help our kids be able to learn how to read, and the teachers to be able to have the tools that they need to ensure that our kids can read. So I just wanted to point that out. Thanks, Brian, for bringing it up.
Mr. Treadaway?
So, in my judgment, this is a carton horse. Why would we ask people for feedback about something that we don't even know whether we're interested in moving the money for? So I would be offended if you asked me for feedback and you don't even have permission to even explore that option. It seems like a carton horse thing. I am curious about the seventh grade. Now, we all know, eighth graders and high school seniors don't accept nothing new. I mean, we know that. But it does seem odd that we would not include the seventh grade on the initial rollout. I'm sure there's a good reason for that. I don't need to know that now, but I just, it just seems like that would make more buy-in at the middle school level.
So, Mr. Treadaway, I would say all of this is in draft form. I think a lot of this would be contingent on, obviously, the program preview fair, the feedback from the vendors, and then obviously fiscal.
And wit and wisdom definitely has the coolest name, if nothing else. I mean, I don't know anything about these things. I am curious about the dovetailing of technology. We've talked about technology, and I would assume there's some kind of dovetailing of those two, you know, I mean, the curriculum and access to technology. And I guess we want to be intentional about that.
Absolutely.
We've already made a decision about technology. And then I just, I guess I want to remind folks that if we had a K-8 reading curriculum, we know that our kids, especially those that are involved in program choice, are bouncing around all over the place. But we know if we have a consistent K-8 reading program, they're leaving whatever school, going to a school, that's going to continue that same curriculum. There's a lot to be said for that, no matter what curriculum we buy into. But that's one of the things I say. And I'm looking at the motion, the draft of the motion, that the fund balance appropriation for ELA curriculum be approved as presented. Seems like we could wordsmith that so that we are sure that we are not making any commitments, but that we are intentional about moving that as a possible, so that, based on whatever the new board decides. But I just think, going to parents about feedback, and you haven't even made a commitment to even look into that purchase, that, to me, that would be off-putting to me, and teachers as well. That's just my input.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Well, at this time, we're going to ask for a motion to approve the ELA curriculum that they presented.
Do we need to wordsmith it? Sam, is that what you?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm skillful enough to do that. But I guess what I want to, is to say that we have the intention of looking for a curriculum that the new board will approve. And I don't know how we word that.
William, any suggestions?
The ELA is approved. Is approved, is approved based on, pending, pending future presentation to the-
Pending final approval.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not spending a penny until-
Correct. We're asking to commit the funds to it, is what we're asking for.
Go ahead, Mr. Treadaway.
Well, I guess I'm prepared to make a motion that the fund balance appropriation for ELA curriculum is, is, is to be explored for final approval in the spring.
Okay. Have a motion.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would just basically be then just moving it for future. So I mean, yeah. Yes, I mean, that would be some expression, I guess, by this board tonight of support for it, but it would still be coming back before us to approve.
Right. What we're asking is the funds to be committed to pursuing the curriculum. So you're committing tonight to, that $2.8 million in fund balance is going to be committed to a curriculum that will be approved by the next board once we bring it in front of them in January.
So we could just leave it as it's written, is what I hear. And I'm asking for guidance down there, mister.
Yes, I mean, what it says right now is that you're making a motion to, that the fund balance appropriation happens, is approved as presented. So I think you definitely want to take the "as presented" part off. It's just a question of, do you want to make it so that the fund balance appropriation is approved pending selection of the curriculum?
That's my question, is, instead of "as approved," or "as presented," should it be pending final approval?
Pending final approval.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I like the selection.
Do we need to make that motion officially?
I think, yeah, I think it does need to be still tied to the selection of the curriculum.
All right. So I would move to, I would move that the fund balance appropriation for ELA curriculum is approved pending final approval by the board. Is that what we're looking for?
Of the selected curriculum is what you need.
Yes.
All right. The old three oh pitch.
The fund balance appropriation for ELA curriculum is approved based upon the selection of the curriculum chosen.
This is the most controversial move of the Board of Education in 2024.
You're really pretty good at writing these, but-
Look out, tick tock.
Gee, thanks, Sam.
Well, to me, to me, the key, the key to me is that the word pending needs to be in there. So that our board in the spring, when we make a final decision, that's when we commit funds.
That's the purpose of the presentation. Presentation has been.
Has what? But how do you go get input? And you can't even guarantee folks that you're even, the board's not even committed behind it.
Is approved based on pending selected curriculum?
No, I think, I think what, Rob, what you're saying is, is that the language says "as presented." So if you look at the last slide, which is in front of us, we say that it "as presented," that the board will make the final decision. So I think, I don't, I don't think you have to say it twice.
Okay, so that light, then we'll take a motion to recommend the fund balance appropriation as presented.
I will withdraw my previous motion and recommend the fund balance appropriation for ELA curriculum as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Okay, board members will move to 11.04. Our Beginning Teacher Support Plan with Dr. Michael Williams and Ms. Angie McLean. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kupicki, and members of the board. I am very grateful to be here tonight with the magnificent Angie McLean, our Beginning Teacher Support Coordinator for our annual presentation of the Beginning Teacher Support Plan. Our Beginning Teacher Support Team is small but mighty. It is led by Ms. McLean, with the support of Leslie Griffin and Michael Peterson. Mr. Reeves and I are very blessed to work with these wonderful folks daily. As you may recall from last year's presentation, our Beginning Teacher Support Plan is part of the district's larger career ladders framework. Our goal is for beginning teachers during their first three years to develop a point of proficiency where they are highly effective and long-term teaching professionals. Tonight, Ms. McLean will focus on the first yellow box, which is our plan to support beginning teachers during the first stages of their careers. And at this time, I will turn the presentation over to her.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kupicki, and the members of the board, and Mr. Snell, District Teacher of the Year. It is a privilege to work alongside Dr. Williams, Mr. Reeves, and the HR department to support the beginning teachers in our district. As a former beginning teacher of Cabarrus County schools, our district continues to put an even stronger system in place for our beginning educators. A key word that you will continue to hear throughout the next few slides is "support." It is the foundation of the work that my team and I strive to implement for the teachers in this district. As the county continues to grow, so does the need for educators within our schools. We currently have 174 first-year teachers, 141 second-year teachers, and 115 third-year teachers. All beginning teachers have a trained mentor, and we have a total of 44 trained lead mentors. We strive to provide all beginning teachers with the differentiated levels of support that they need. All beginning teachers receive a core level of support, which includes a new teacher orientation, a mentor, a lead mentor, new teacher support resources, content-specific professional development through the support of our amazing curriculum and instruction department, and optimal working conditions provided through the school administration team. Beginning teachers who need an additional level of support will receive the core level of support, in addition to the school-level process map, coaching, and beginning teacher intensive professional development. A beginning teacher that reaches the need for an intensive level of support will be coached by the district teacher support specialists and continue to receive the supplemental and core support from their school. We believe in providing all beginning teachers with a core foundation. Each year, we focus on four key areas. First, the Human Resources Team provides an annual teacher orientation, new teacher orientation. Listed are some of the examples of the trainings. I want to highlight the diverse Beginning Teacher Roundtable discussion that we did last year, that took place last year. We hosted a panel discussion with four beginning teachers from multiple schools. They shared their experiences as beginning teachers, the level of support that they received, professional development, and resources that they had received. Our school-level mentors provide personalized support for beginning teachers. This support starts at the schools and is extended to the teacher support specialist team. There are multiple online resources accessible to beginning teachers through the Human Resources homepage, such as the Cabarrus County Schools Beginning Teacher Support, which is an elementary site, the Beginning Teacher Support page as well. The district provides all first-year beginning teachers with three powerful resources. Teach like a champion, is one. Get better faster is the second one. And the final one is Harry Wong's First 100 Days of School, which can be used for an additional layer of support. The final layer of the continual support is delivered by our dedicated curriculum and instruction team. Not only does the district provide beginning teachers with a three-day orientation, we also provide support through mentors and lead mentors. A lead mentor will host a monthly meeting for their beginning teachers, and they will also receive a Beginning Teacher newsletter through NCDPI. There are a couple layers of ongoing support that are implemented at the schools through data digs, coaching sessions, and from the Human Resources Team. For teachers who need additional support, we have developed a school-level process map, which allows principals to know how to provide the support. This support can also come from additional observations and assignment to a beginner teacher classroom management course taught by me and other master teachers. If a teacher, if a beginning teacher needs an additional layer of support, the teacher support specialist will partner alongside the school to provide coaching and an individualized support plan. As a former classroom teacher assistant, teacher, and now teacher support specialist, I'm an example of the growth of this district. Growing and supporting educators is such a pivotal focus for our district. Beginning teachers are coached through a quarterly Power School checklist. This is our second year with the implementation of support coaches, and our mentor program continues to grow. And last year, we implemented a professional development that was solely dedicated to our third-year beginning teachers. Over the next three slides, I'm delighted to share images that were caught by our amazing communication team from this professional development entitled, "The Fewer Things Better BT3 Summit." I will show those photos to you. So our beginning teachers received a keynote address from North Carolina's 2022 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Leah Carper, and from two of our very own, Mrs. Ashton Berry, who is a former Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year, and Ms. Natalia Mahia, which was the Beginning Teacher of the Year for the state of North Carolina. And then, not only did they get this amazing professional development, they also received a copy of the book, Fewer Things Better, by Angela Watson. So this very last slide is what I like to call, "The Power of Feedback." So this very last slide is what I like to call the power of feedback. It highlights a portion of the feedback that we received about the professional development. I would like to share a comment that was expressed by a third-year, at that time, kindergarten teacher. She stated, "I love the numbered heads collaborative pair strategy shared in Ashton Berry's session, and I can't wait to try something similar with my kindergartners. I'm definitely taking away high-yield strategies, and I can't wait to dig deeper into that to see what strategies I've already used in the classroom and how effective they are, and also add new, highly effective strategies." At this time, I will return the presentation back to Dr. Williams. Thank you for continuing the Beginning Teacher Support Plan for Cabarrus County Schools.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. I am very proud of the work that Ms. McLean puts in to supporting our beginning teachers. She is phenomenal, along with her colleagues, and the, the, the one-on-one support that she and her colleagues give our teachers is spectacular. I do want to just point out that it's important to note that the funding for the BT Support Plan comes primarily from Title II funds, which is designated, which are designated for teacher recruitment, growth, support, and development. In this case, the funds are used for personnel for professional development and to fund the new teacher orientation. Tonight, we are coming to you per policy TCED-16, which requires that each LEA develop the annual plan and provide a comprehensive program of support for beginning teachers. It must be presented to and approved by the Board of Education, and we submit that as part of our audit to the Department of Public, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Ms. McLean has also collected all of the documents and assurances related to the BT Support Plan. If you wish to review that, you certainly may. And so our request for you tonight is to approve our 2024-2025 Beginning Teacher Support Plan. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I really appreciate the effort that we put into, to this and supporting our new teachers, and hats go off to, to you and your team. Thank, thank you. A question I have is, you, you get the presentation every year? What's different between this year from last year?
Yeah, so I would say the biggest piece is, is, but two things. One, the implementation of our Beginning Teacher Support Coaches, our retirees who are, who move around the district to, to help support those beginning teachers who need a little more than what a mentor in the building can provide. And that BT3 Summit was a, was a huge addition. That was a place where we were kind of letting folks drop off at the end a little bit there and not supporting all the way through those first three years. Ms. McLean's work there to create that BT3 Support Plan was, was, was paramount.
Outstanding, thank you.
Mr. Floyd?
Two things. One, I'm glad to hear that the Wongmeister, Harry Wong, is still in.
Still around.
BT, immortal, survived.
Give me five.
Generations of cancel culture, that's great. Mentor teachers, mentioned, we have forty-four lead mentors. Can you talk a little bit about how we incentivize them or try to take care of them?
Well, all of our mentors receive two days' worth of flex time for supporting our beginning teachers in our district. We also try to load them down with some teacher swag. We're always looking for other endeavors to be able to provide some sort of monetary compensation, so it's things that's in the work.
We, historically, some years ago, the, the General Assembly removed the, the stipends for mentors. That is something that we continuously lobby for as we feel like those, those mentors and lead mentors should be fairly compensated for their work, and that, that does become difficult when there isn't state funding to be able to do that.
I bring that up because that's, in the Army, we'd call them combat multipliers. You take one soldier and turn him into ten. Those are important people, and I know this is above and beyond us, but that's an important thing for people to think about, and when they're talking to members of the General Assembly, we need that money. Thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
Just wanted to ask if we know, like, numbers-wise or percentages-wise, how many of our beginning teachers are staying in the district?
Well, the, only six percent left last year, so we are actually under the state rate at this current, current point.
State, the state rate right now of attrition for first-year teachers is fifteen percent.
Wow, thanks.
Mr. Tredaway?
I just am so pleased to see the intentionality behind this. I've been around long enough to remember when we were the model for the state, and we kind of lost our way a little bit, and the lack of funding was a big part of that. But we've got our new Vicky Honeycutt and Ms. McLean, and I am, that walks into a classroom with credibility, and, and rightfully so. So I'm so excited about this.
Ms. Escobar?
I, I'm also very thankful for the program because I, I just think about what distinguishes us, what makes Cabarrus County special. It's hard, it's, you know, it's hard to get teachers, because not everyone's going into the profession, but then when you get them, you want to keep them. So I appreciate the, the community that you're forming through this, too, because that's what I think gets people to stay. We can't, we, we can't determine how much they get paid. We, we are at that mercy of that, and so I just, I really appreciate that. And that goes to my question. So explain the significance of three. You have told us this before, but just explain why, why are we focused on those first three years?
That's, North Carolina legislation requires us, they call beginning teachers our years one, two, and three. So Ms. McLean's work focuses on, on those. Quite honestly, we support all the way across. Kristi Caputo is our veteran teacher support specialist who works alongside Ms. McLean. Michael Peterson, the coordinator for that area, also works in teacher development and growth. So we continue to support as part of our career ladders across the, the spectrum of a teacher's career. Ms. McLean's work by legislation concentrates on those first three years.
Any other questions? Okay, board members, at this time, we call for a motion to approve the Support Plan as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Walter makes the motion, second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the Support Plan is approved as presented. Thank you. We'll move to eleven point zero five, Policies for Approval on First Read with Dr. Sandy Ward. Good evening.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kopicke, Caleb, and the rest of the board members. Before I begin with our policies tonight, I, too, wanted to share a heartfelt, deep appreciation to our outgoing board members. It's been a pleasure working with you and just looking at your passion and your dedication to the students of Cabarrus County Schools. We fight in different ways, but we know that we all love our students, and I think that's the most important thing. So I wanted to say that first. We have four policies up for this evening. I did not receive any questions. Do we have any questions before I begin? They were pretty straightforward. Most of them were required. I like those because there shouldn't be a whole lot of questions. All right. So our first policy is Policy Thirty-Six-Ten. It's about our counseling program. Now, this policy first came up in fall of 2023, along with the Parents Bill of Rights, that whole package. We did not address it then because we were missing one piece that we now have, and that is the peer-to-peer support programs that we have across all of our schools. So those are now in place, so we are now bringing that policy forward. Any questions on Thirty-Six-Ten? Great. Our second policy is Forty-three-Forty-four, Fifty-Thirty-five dash seventy-three-Forty-five, the use of unmanned aircrafts, which are drones. This is also a required PLS update. It revises the policy to reflect the repeal of the state law that had required a permit to operate an unmanned aircraft for commercial purposes. So this was repealed and is required. Any questions? You want to say anything? Say it again.
It's a state permit.
State permit, okay, great, wonderful. It's, it's required. Wonderful. All right, our third policy is Fifty-Twenty-two, Registered Sex Offenders. This updates the definition of registered sex offender based on statutory changes. Also required. Questions? All right, we are cooking with grease. And our last one is Sixty-One-Twenty, our Student Health Services. This changes the language in one of our sections due to state Board of Education policy, which is also required. Looks like we're all good, look at that. I love it. All right, no further questions.
Okay, board members, since this is a business and work session, we are going to approve these policies on first read. I call for a motion to approve the policies on first read as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome.
We'll move to eleven point zero six, our District Support Plan for Schools Designated as Low Performing with Ms. Sarah Reeves and Ms. Dr. Bowers in here.
Good evening, thank you again for having me. So as you may remember, in October, we actually came to you, Dr. Bowers and myself, to share with you regarding next steps with our schools that receive designations of low-performing school status. We needed to share with you updates on our district's support plan, specifically provisioning additional supports that are tiered out for those schools to be able to support them over the course of the year with continuous improvement. So as we've shared, we continue to strive to be the best in the nation with specific emphasis around foundational literacy, math proficiency, as well as student wellness. And so according to the statutory requirements in North Carolina, we have specific designations for schools that receive low-performing school status. This is any school that receives a D or F designation that meets or does not meet growth. So even if a school meets growth, if they are a D or F, they will still be low-performing according to the state designation. Obviously, we had already previously shared with you in October that we had notified all families of this designation after the State Board of Education approved the letter grades as well as the school accountability results in that State Board of Education meeting. And then in October, we actually shared with you our plan of tiered support for these specific schools, as well as updated their school improvement plans to designate this tier of support. And then we opened a window of feedback for thirty days to solicit feedback from all of the families that attended those schools to be able to provide input on their school improvement plans, as well as the district's support plans as it relates to school improvement performance. Within thirty days of that window going live, according to general statute, it is required of the local Board of Education to obviously approve those plans. So again, just to refresh on the district provision supports, we are actually in the middle of these right now. We've actually been having these continuous school improvement meetings. We're walking classrooms, we're meeting with school leaders, meeting with teachers, talking about next steps as it relates to school supports and the accountability results that obviously show up and attribute to school letter grades. Additionally, we're continuing to work in conjunction with accountability to help get really clear data metrics around what is needed to be able to move these schools off of low-performing school status. Additionally, we started launching, our October fifteenth began the Parent Engage Window. We worked with our communications team, and that window actually closed today. I even went in during the meeting today to ensure that we received two responses concerning school improvement plans. Specifically, they were all great input, that they requested that the school improvement teams consider as it related to their school improvement plans. That feedback was actually shared specifically with those school leaders. And up until this point, those are the only two specific comments that we received around school improvement plans, and so we are coming before you tonight to ask for approval of those plans. And so as you can see here, this is just a recap of our timeline for supporting schools that receive low-performing school status, and it started in October, and obviously will continue after today, but this is the formal approving according to general statute.
Any questions, board members? Okay, well, I will call for a motion to approve the District Support Plan as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The Plan is approved as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, we're going to move to seven, eleven point zero seven, which is our Attorney Contract. This is an additional item. Is there any other questions or comments about the Attorney Contract before we vote on this?
So that extends it till through June?
So this will extend the contract through June, and then there will be an amended increase starting January first. Any other questions? Okay, I call for a motion that we approve the Attorney Contract, and that is with Eisenhower, Johnson Allison, and Hord, and Campbell Shatley.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Mr. Tredaway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That, okay, that contract is approved. Thank you. Okay, we will move to our guest speakers. It's time now for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaking for a group may be allowed up to five minutes at the discretion of the Board Chair to express interest and concerns related to the official business of the Board of Education in the school district. The speakers will be called in the order in which we receive the request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave additional information with the board clerk. Statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or intimately threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Any limitation on public comment shall be viewpoint neutral. The Board Chair has the authority to rule the speaker out of order. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the Board Chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the Board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. So our first speaker is Renee Wright. Okay, we'll get her when she comes back. So we'll start then with Deborah Allen. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the school board. I would like to share a letter given to me one month ago from two students from about where I was stuck at Winkler Middle School. Dear Mrs. Allen, I'm sorry for our class being so disrespectful. I really do hope it gets better soon, for your sake. Also, please don't quit. You're one of the best subs I've ever had, and I really enjoy coming to this class because of you. I believe you can get through this until Mrs. P. gets back. Anyways, I'm sorry your voice is gone and you don't feel well. I hope you feel better soon. I'll even pray for you, but for now, just push through. Sophia and Kate, and I have their permission to read that without their last names. So this letter was given to me three days before I resigned. It was written by two eighth-grade students from one of the art classes at Winkler Middle School. They had not been told that I was leaving. Why did they write it and why am I sharing it? To inform you of what has changed at Winkler Middle School this year. I and so many others have come before this board to plead with you to not go through with redistricting. This letter is a result of the decision to redistrict, which has put stress on the students and the staff at Winkler Middle School. Winkler had been my favorite school to start out, and now it's broken. The question still resonates. Why has this board not heard the voices of the parents and the students who have spoken? What would motivate this board to decide to move students, many of whom had not been properly prepared from schools like Roberta Road in North Cabarrus, yes, North Cabarrus? Why have so many students not learned to follow the rules that are written in your discipline plan? Sadly, many of the students who have moved, were moved, came with a history of difficulty and have yet to comply with reasonable expectations. Winkler Middle School was different up to this year. They were raising up students with excellence. They were a cohesive wolf pack. Now that our classes are filled with over thirty students, too many students in each of the six classes are difficult and cause problems on a daily basis. The administration was and is supportive, but there are just too many fires sparked daily, and Winkler and its staff are simply overburned. By the way, the school has yet to fill that art vacancy, and the teacher's not returning until February. Why not fix the problems by applying common sense solutions that encourage learning and discourage problems from being passed on or moved up? Why not enforce the discipline policy? A policy is only as effective when it is enforced. No excuses should be permitted. A better solution would be to reduce class sizes. Smaller classes yield better results. Why not hire more teachers and lobby the state to raise teacher salaries? Why not reduce administrative costs by eliminating the bloating at the administrative level and invest more in the classroom? A bottom-up hierarchy is much more effective than a top-down one. Educational monies need to be put directly into the classroom. This would empower the teachers and provide the results we need for our community. Unless you start to listen to the voices of the parents and students who have been patiently waiting for you to enforce effective policies that bring real change to the schools and enforce common sense rules and standards, you will continue to lose teachers, have difficulty finding substitutes like me, but I. finding substitutes like me, but I still sub there and just not on long-term basis.
Thank you.
And replaces and ultimately run decent families out of the public school. Now is the time to act. Now that the people of Cabarrus County and all of America have spoken, what will you do? Thank you for your time.
Okay, we will go to Rena Wright.
Good afternoon to the members, coworkers, and the family of Cabarrus County School District. My name is Ms. Wright, AKA Ms. Ryder, for my students. And I'm proud, I'm proud to be a school bus driver for Cabarrus County School District. I'm here today to speak on behalf of my colleagues and myself about the vital role we play in the lives of our students and the dedication it requires to do our job well. Each morning, I am the first face my students see. I greet them with a warm good morning, and when I drop them off, I always remind them to have a great day. And to remember the hand signals. It's a small but important, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's a small but important ritual that sets a positive tone to their, I mean, tone for their day. I feel privileged to be a part of their journey, both literally and figuratively. Being a bus driver may seem simple, but there's so much that goes on behind the scenes. We're not only drivers, we're caretakers, protectors, and mentors. We deal with everything from cleaning up after a student who's feeling unwell to responding to bloody noses and managing behavioral challenges, all while ensuring everyone's safety on the road. We constantly alert, balancing our focus on driving with keeping an eye on our students. Our duty extends beyond the will. It's a responsibility to ensure that each child arrives safely and with a smile. I have, I have had the privilege of working alongside wonderful, dedicated drivers at West Cabarrus High School and Harold E. Winkler Middle School. My colleagues there helped me grow into the job I am today, always willing to share advice and support. I've learned so much from these drivers, some who have been here for over twenty years, and their commitment and compassion have been invaluable to me. I've also had the joy of working with drivers who care for our disabled students, and the love and patience they show is nothing short of remarkable. I'm here today to let the board know that we have dedicated, dedicated caring and highly responsible group of drivers in Cabarrus County. We work hard, often going above and beyond, and I believe essential that our efforts are recognized alongside those of teachers, principals, and other staff. Driving a school bus is not as simple as it might seem.
Thank you.
But we take great pride in what we do.
Thank you. You did great.
Well, we thought you were a winner, come, I direct them.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Chairman Chair, Dr. Pipicky, members of the board, I'll give this letter to my drivers with valid concerns and issues. Okay? It says, "We are right on behalf of the dedicated bus driver of Cabarrus County to bring to your attention several pressing concerns that have not been accurately addressed, despite drivers wanting the proper chain of command. We respectfully seek your intervention to approve conditions for drivers to foster better working environment that ultimately benefits the safety and well-being of our students and transport daily. The question of why the county assured the drivers is frequently raised. We didn't answer that without, outside the board, Cabarrus County is a nationwide problem." But it hits home here. But our drivers have been treated, sometimes unfairly. We bring issues to our chain commander, met with attitude and pushback, and all wanted these simple solutions to our problems. You know, you guys get up early in the morning, do our bus driving thing, and you know, we do these contracts with agreements that don't figure out, they call them hand on wheel time, driver time. It don't count for the pre-trip, post-trip. You're doing a seating chart. It's actually hand on the wheel. It don't account for that. And the system they use is called TMS. You know, they count for the traffic delays, kids loading the bus, some stops have about sixty kids one stop, it takes about three minutes to load. And you have to go to another stop with the same minute. So six nineteen or six twenty, I got me four stops in one minute. Not possible. Also, the concern about discrepancy, and I think it's good that also accrue holidays and in six days, which are calculated based on, and actually six hours going back to the, the pre-trip and the post-trip. Although management, as they say, our agreements, they have the signatures and driver signatures. It's affecting a contractual obligation. However determined, not actually representing the workload leading to insufficient conversations and support. For instance, we have a driver as a, maybe an eight hour route, actually driver route, but on days where off, going to get six and a half, it takes actually eight hours. So there's discrepancy in that. And go back to the hands-on driving, and that's a big thing with us. Another issue is the attendance bonus. Well, given that, a few years ago, it can be up to three days, not one day, and not that can miss any tears at all, whereas if you're a driver, been for years, and a daughter got in an accident, she missed one tear, it took a bonus from her. So we espouse that both, urge the board to cooperate with us, the drivers. We should invite you to establish an intended meeting with the drivers or bus drivers or committee. We can openly discuss the concerns without manpower management, and accrue your direct record from the drivers rather than.
Thank you.
Fifth of versions. I thank for your time. And, thank you.
If you have any information you'd like to leave the board, you can. If you have any information, you can just hand it to our board clerk right over here. She's at the end down here. Just hand it to her, and she can give it out to us. Our next speaker is Naomi Hatchell. Welcome.
Good evening, I just want to thank everyone for listening to me tonight. I am Naomi Hatchell. I am a resident of Cabarrus County and the leader of the TPUSA faith at CAPCO group here in Cabarrus County. I've been given five minutes to speak because I am representing a larger group. Many of them are here with me tonight. They are the parents, the grandparents, the family members who care deeply about the well-being of children in Cabarrus County. I stand before you as an advocate for those children and the future of our community. First and foremost, I want you to know what we value. We love children. We believe that every child is a precious gift from God created in his image, deserving of love, respect, and protection. We believe that children are a blessing and inherited from the Lord, and that they are fearfully and wonderfully made. We believe that every child has inherent value, purpose, and potential, and it is our responsibility to nurture them in a way that honors God's plans for their lives. And as Mr. Floyd mentioned in the October meeting, as we saw here tonight, there are many wonderful things happening here in the schools. We have dedicated teachers and staff who nurture not only academic growth, but also the personal development of our students. However, just as in a thriving garden, there are areas of growth while patches that require careful attention, and it's really up to us to nurture what flourishes and addresses the parts of the garden that need tending. And as board members, you are the master gardeners entrusted with the tools of policy and budgets to determine how to tend this garden. It is not an easy task, but it is your solemn duty to cultivate an environment where all students can thrive. You are tasked with ensuring that every part of this educational garden is given the care it needs to grow strong. So tonight, I want to address matters of safety and well-being of students in our school system. The last board meeting, we saw representatives from Moms for Liberty and two fathers raised concerns about a policy regarding biological males being allowed in female bathrooms. And unfortunately, their concerns were not met with the respect that they deserved. In fact, it seemed like quite the opposite. Since that meeting, I have researched this issue. I have talked to parents and grandparents that report to me their students are afraid to use bathrooms in our schools because there's boys in the girls' bathrooms. While these reports are being anonymous because they're afraid, one thing is clear. This board has yet to take a decisive action to address these concerns. And by failing to act, it sends a message that the voices of concerned parents are dismissed, and that difficult challenges are being avoided. Now, as we move forward, it's important that we advocate for policies that prioritize safety and security and the well-being of every student in Cabarrus County. We are not in agreement with policies that fail to recognize the biological reality of two sexes. We reject any policy that allows staff to withhold information from parents about their children. We will not stand by any student or staff member forced to use preferred pronouns that violate their freedom of speech or religion. Now, at the same time, we support policies that reflect the values of our community. We believe in policies that allow every student to flourish in an environment where their dignity and safety are respected. We support policies that protect parental rights, uphold freedom of speech, and safeguard the freedom of religion. These values are essential to maintaining the trust of this community and ensuring that our schools are places where every student can thrive. Now, I'm not just here to point out problems, but I want to offer you solutions. Recently, Phil Fur, the Director of Communications of Cabarrus County Schools, was quoted saying that district has to comply with federal case law, and then he referenced the Rinn versus Gloucester County School Board case. However, the full details of this case are very crucial, because Grimm was a student that legally changed their sex on both the birth certificate and state ID, but the school board refused to recognize this legal change. This was not about a student's whims or identity of the day, it was about a legally recognized status. This is important because it shows that a school board, this school board, can create policies that respect legal precedents while also ensuring the safety of all of our students. So just as a gardener nurtures a garden, you have the power to craft policies that protect students while adhering to legal standards. The solution tonight is wise policy, so no more hands, I can't do anything excuses are not acceptable. As the citizens of Cabarrus County, we want policies that reflect the values of our community that protect our children. And I believe on November fifth, our voices were heard loud and clear with the election of four Republican school board members and Donald J. Trump. This message, not for the board members in this room, but it resonated across the nation. It's the number one reason people voted for Trump this week. As we move forward, we will hold our newly elected board members accountable to the promises they made. We have to expect the superintendent and the other school officials to uphold the values of Cabarrus County. Together, we can ensure that our schools will remain places where every, every student is nurtured, protected, and where the trust of the community is honored.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we're going to move to twelve, thirteen point zero one. I'll call for a motion that our meeting be adjourned.
We have one more here.
Mr. Wanish, sorry about that. It's okay.
We can forget about you.
Yeah, I'm a regular media, regular presenter here. I appreciate your time. First, those that are leaving, I did want to thank you all for, for your services that you did here. And what people don't realize is when you're working here, you're giving your time, and that time is something you never get back. So I appreciate what you've done as a, as a service. I'd also like to congratulate making it through the election process, and best wishes to the new board members. Once installed, you'll be embarking on a journey few of you have ever seen. You'll be responsible for spending a third of a billion dollars this year. Hopefully, you'll be fortunate enough to congratulate 2,300 kindergarteners that will graduate in 2036. Let me start by, start tonight, though, with a little story. Imagine that you crash into a car ahead of you. Police are come. You're clearly in the wrong, hitting a man from behind. Do you step up and say, "It's my fault"? Start by looking back, figure out what happened, then look ahead. Do what comes, do you come up with the funds to pay for the damages? Do you figure out ways to change what you, what's been going wrong? The district is sort of in the same state. Many buildings are now compliant to county building, by the county building inspector. Your elementary schools are breaking the state laws on K through three on their sizes. You've taken two schools, and AT Allen, Pitt School, and McAllister Elementary, all exceed the class size limits and, that were written in the statute, and I'll get to that in a Your school buildings are packed, so additional teachers may not have the ability to have their own classrooms. The district is excessively dependent on ninety module units across much of the district. During the summer, you closed Beverly Hills and Coal Train Elementarys and built one new school, RV McAllister, to hold the relocated students from the neighboring sites. So overcrowded, many schools have four lunch hours spread on four, over four hours of day, maybe eleven to three, sometimes intolerable for kids that have eating disorders. Kids bouncing from bathroom to bathroom, looking for an empty stall, inadequate program choice opportunities across the district, with not all having equal access to the possibility of enrolling. All this on the year after, we just did a year-long realignment effort. Listening to myself, this sounds like the root cause is growing, is growth within the community with inadequate planning to have new schools for the new students. Though the annual budget presented to the commissioners since 2016 have all talked about significant requirements for capital improvement programs. Early, only a little growth, only a little for growth, usually rebuilding, and after other, and often asking, again, for funds presented in the year before to try and get their capital plans done. It seems replacement and capacity destruction was more important than, than the sites accommodating. In summary, the district dependency on, desperately needs more elementary capacity. Need it today. The district needs far better capacity planning for availability capacity. The district needs to continue program, to continue program choice, but major revamping for equity to all must, must occur. I'm also, there's a handout for everybody. I did, when I looked at the principals, principals, a membership report, the PMR report, and got the contents for the K through three schools. I then did an open, a public record request, and got the number of teachers in every school for those classes. If I look at them, and that's what, it's a two-page report by school, over on the right, I actually show in a gray color how many schools are above the school, the statute recommendation of eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen for the K through three respectively. Okay? Over three-quarters of all the classes are above what the state recommends. There are exceptions. You can go above those three numbers, but they're also very limited, and your funding should have been at the eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen level. So you should have teachers left over. If you look at what would be required to meet the goal, you only need about fifty more teachers. So that's not bad. Ten thousand students are affected by this, that's a third of your population. And when these schools are overcrowded, fourth and fifth graders, they get to be big class sizes.
Thank you.
So those are the problems. Thank you.
Okay, board members, I call for a motion that the meeting be adjourned.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor say aye. The meeting is now adjourned.